Sounds suspicious to me.
How's your baby doing? Not so much of a baby anymore, probably.
Just a little jabbered.
Gross old boys, don't they? It's crazy. Our oldest graduates from SDSU in May. Where did he come from? And he's gonna be living near you, he's gonna be in the apartment above the meat line.
Oh, I didn't even realize it was an apartment there.
I didn't either, but it came open and some people were going in. So I can tell that it's a good location.
Okay, seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order.
Turn your speakers on, please.
Um, we can do roll call when you're ready.
First one, introduce the two new planning commission members, Mike Welsh and Sam Hummel.
Welcome.
All right, Barkle.
Here.
Loest.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Hummel.
Here.
Nelson. Welsh.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
All right, everybody got a chance to look over previous meetings minutes, unless there's any changes, any motion to approve those minutes.
So moved, Loest.
Second.
Kettering.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carried. Is there anything to be added or deleted from this agenda?
We're gonna subtract the Schenk plat, uh, Lake Forests twelve through fifteen, they weren't able to get their signatures in time. So we'll put that on next month.
All right, any other changes to this agenda? If not, I need to have a motion to approve the agenda with the modification of removing the Schenk plat.
Motion to approve, Loest.
Second.
Hummel.
All right, got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carried. Okay, we'll go around with conflict of interest declarations, um, we can start with Don.
I have none.
Chris Barkle, none.
Loest, none.
Welsh, none.
Hummel, none.
Dan?
Clark, none.
All right, thanks. Okay, so now we have the reorganization of the planning commission, we need to do chairman and vice chair.
Yep, so first we'll take a nomination for chair, we'll take a vote on that, and then whoever's chair can take over for the vice chair.
Yep. So since our vice chair was Lauren and she's absent, I guess, I don't know, if one of you want to run it, I guess I shouldn't run the...
I'll, I'll run the first part, and then after we elect a chairman, they can take over for the vice chair.
All right, Bill, take it away.
So take a nomination for chair of the planning commission?
I nominate Chris Barkle.
Back here.
Any other nominations? Okay, let's take a vote, Welsh?
Aye.
Loest?
Aye.
Barkle?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Kettering?
Aye.
Hummel? Hummel, excuse me, yes.
Aye.
Gotcha. All right, Chris Barkle is the chair, you can take over.
All right, thank you guys. Um, now I need a nomination for vice chair.
Uh, motion for Mr. Welsh.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Welsh and a second. Any other nominations?
I'll motion, Sam Hummel.
Motion for Sam Hummel to be vice chair.
Was that Sam?
Was that Sam?
Oh, Sam.
Yep.
The motion for himself, then? Okay.
Sam, just to be clear, you're, you're motioning to nominate yourself for vice chair?
Yeah, I can do that, right, in Robert's role?
Yep, you can do that. All right, got a motion for Sam, is there a second? I'll second.
Well, normally we do this by paper, since we have two people on the phone, I'm not sure how we wanna do it, are you, are you okay doing it vocal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mike Welsh?
I vote for Sam Hummel.
Okay. Sherry, Loest, excuse me.
Welsh.
Barkle?
Welsh.
Kettering?
Welsh.
Clark?
Well, I can't vote, I don't know either one of them.
Upstand?
You have standing, okay. That would make... Uh, Welsh.
You mustn't need to be a high breaker.
Nope, I think we got it covered.
Yep. So we had two vote, two votes for Sam Hummel and three votes for Welsh and one abstain. So then Welsh would be the vice chair.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, first...
It was a nice try.
Never volunteer, Don.
Learned, learned to count, I mean.
Thank you. Thank you for your confidence, I appreciate it.
All right, our first agenda item, the Brady rezone, applicant is requesting to rezone three parcels that are dual zone, low density rural residential district and rural transitional, um, to low density rural residential. Per Article eighteen, section eighteen oh nine, Article twenty, section twenty oh three, said property is legally described as lot A in northeast quarter, northwest quarter and south one half of northwest quarter, northeast quarter and the east sixteen and one half feet of the northeast quarter, the northwest quarter and the north six hundred feet, north six hundred and sixty feet of the west four hundred and, four, four hundred feet of the south half of government lot ten. All in section thirteen, township ninety-three, range fifty-five, Yankton County, South Dakota. Address is two six five Antler Drive.
All right, so Tom Brady owns three parcels out here, this is the parcel that's got the address of Antler Drive, he owns this parcel also and this parcel, for reference, this is the Jim River Bridge on East Highway fifty. This is the Christmas Tree Farm, if you're familiar with it. It's dual zoned, rural transitional, low density, we're trying to rezone it to all low density residential to make it more conforming and allow him more use of his property.
So is it all of those different parcels, or was it just the one?
Nope, it's all three, this one, that one, and the one with the house on it. They're all, they're all, uh, dual zone, we wanna get them all cleaned up.
So it'd all go to the same thing, the yellow?
It'll all go low density, five acre minimum. And Mr. Brady is here. If you have any questions.
Unless anybody has any questions for Bill, invite Mr. Brady to come up if you wanna say anything about this.
No, it all sounds good to me, good or done.
All right, I'll open up to public comment, anybody else in the public wanna speak? All right, a closed public comment, board discussion. I guess, just going through the checklist, really, the only reasons to change it, it's dual zoned, um, rural transition wasn't really ever intended to be a permanent state, and making it all the same thing in that area, so already, low density, I think, makes sense.
That's all in the flood zone?
That actually is not.
No.
No, well, there might be a little bit right over here, but this isn't.
Okay.
It's high enough, get down here, it is, but he's a little higher.
I don't think it significantly changes the area or anything, just makes his property more usable.
Correct.
So the amendment or change will make possible the reasonable use of the land, um, will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, and will not be injurious, injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. And I don't see anything, any red flags with those.
Guess I would agree, um, entertain a motion to approve based on...
Do you wanna step through the rest of them, or, so the comprehensive plan, specific rules governing land uses, zoning district regulations, so those, as far as the location of this property, doesn't seem to be any red flags, again, contradictory to our ordinance. So, and I don't believe the ingress, egress, off right of way parking, refuse, utilities, screening, buffering, et cetera, any of those really apply there. So, a change in zoning really isn't going to cause an issue, so I think we're good.
I'd entertain a motion, then.
Move approval of the rezone Loest.
Second, Kettering.
Unless there's anything to add from anyone from the board, we can do a roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Loest?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hummel?
Yeah.
Welsh?
Yes.
Clark?
Dan?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have my thought on you.
That's all right. All right, motion is approved.
Tom, you're good for tonight, give me a call tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. All right, next agenda item is a list rezone, applicant is requesting to rezone a lot in the low density rural residential R one to moderate density rural residential R two, per Article eighteen, section eighteen oh nine, and Article twenty, section twenty oh three, said property is legally described as page addition in the east half, the southwest quarter of section ten, um, T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM.
So, at the last meeting, we approved a plat, this is West Eleventh, surveying off this piece, seven point some acres. Now they're asking to rezone that to moderate density residential, and you'll see in the packet, they have a, a plat proposed also to divide that up into lots that are one and a quarter, I believe, to one and a half acres, somewhere in there. So there will be five lots, if approved.
So this is rezoning just the lots on the front there?
Just, yeah, we, we, just this one parcel we did last month, and then trying to rezone it first, and then we have the plat later, later this meeting, if the rezone is approved.
But it's not rezoning that whole field or anything?
No, no, just like I said, you can see the property line is right here. And it goes straight across and down. Unfortunately, Beacon doesn't catch up as quick. But, here's what the lot, well, it's in the packet there. Right there. So these five lots, this is this parcel. This one right here. And they're already building on one, 'cause they can do that, and as soon as it's platted off, they've got another one ready to go. So it's gonna, if approved, it'll provide some needed housing.
All right, any other questions for Bill? All right, I invite Ryan, if you wanna come up and say anything?
I'm good, I'm Bill's explained it, I won't refer to anything else unless anybody's got questions.
Okay, I don't open up for public comment?
I have a question.
Yep.
These will be single family residences.
I'm assuming that the zoning will require you single families, or not?
In all residential districts, you require, well, they could apply for a conditional use permit to do like a dual family, but they'd have to go through a conditional use process, but I think their intention is single family dwellings.
That's what we're going for.
All right, unless there's anything else from the public, I will close public comment right now. All right, any more board discussion?
Do you wanna walk through all the things, or do you want me to?
You can go ahead.
Uh, so, uh, under number eighteen oh nine, number five, reasons set forth in the application justify a recommendation to approve, um, will make possible the reasonable use of the land, building and structure, uh, will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this ordinance, and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare as presented and testified to by the applicant. So essentially, everything on the south side of West Eleventh is all homes and about this size of lots, there's some, there's some bigger ones, I guess, probably.
We rezoned these two from rural transitional to moderate density.
Yep.
And this one's already in process of being developed.
Correct, so when that road was surfaced, um, the vision was to see homes along the north side of that road, or we, the expectation was, once it was paved, there would be homes along the north side of that road, so... And then the other section in D, um, again, ingress and egress to property, so all of these will have driveways off of a paved road.
Yep, they, they also have to join the road district.
Correct, yep, so that will, um, transfer some of the costs to the current residents onto the new ones. Um, off right of way parking and such will be, obviously, the homes themselves, refuse and service areas, I'm assuming there's garbage in the area. Utilities are all there, no screening or buffering would be needed, no signs needed, um, yards and open spaces, the yard size is met with the lots according to the plat that it will be coming, so it is generally compatible with the adjacent properties. So no big red flags there.
Oh, it's basically gonna make it about the same as the rest of the area there.
Correct. Yep. And if the Deer Boulevard heading north is hard surface someday, I would assume they'll curve around and houses left and right, or east and west.
Yeah.
So... You ready for a motion?
Yep, I'm ready for a motion, unless there's anything else, anybody else wants to add?
Motion to approve the rezone Loest.
Second, Clark.
All right, I have a motion and a second, so we can vote when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle?
Yes.
Loest?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hummel?
Yeah.
Welsh?
Yes.
Clark?
Yeah.
Give me a call tomorrow, Ryan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so we are on to the plats. And I'm not even gonna try to pronounce that first one, so...
Mewchel Mouse, that's how I pronounce it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's gonna argue it. All right. Let me pull it up on Beacon here. I think that's the right one. So this parcel is what he's replating, it is currently divided into twelve different tiny lots. And so he is replating it into two lots, I believe he wants to build here and then a family member here. So it cleans all of those non-conforming lots up into two, two conforming lots.
Right now on Beacon, it just shows us one lot?
Well, if you read the legal description, it'll say lots one through twelve. Because they, they, if, once they want to pay the taxes all in one bill, it shows as one parcel, but it's technically twelve lots. And it's five acres, so you know they're all non-conforming. And this is the road they'll use, these are overgrown with trees, but they are dedicated right of ways, so I believe they're gonna come off of Kirby Street.
Where is this at?
The Riverside Acres, uh, excuse me, Timberland Park.
Oh, okay.
Here is the, uh, Three Sun, oops, Three Suns RV Park, or right down here. But right now, it's just a bunch of trees.
Okay. Seems pretty cut and dry, cleaning up, making conforming lots out of non-conforming lots.
We like that.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
I'd move to approve the plat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Loest?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hummel?
Yeah.
Welsh?
Yes.
Clark?
Yeah.
All right, next one, Schenk is taking off till next month, so the Reed plat.
A little too touchy. So they currently own this parcel, right here, off Willowdale Road, just north of Highway fifty. And the property lines were a little, a little goofy, so they replatted it to straighten them out. Their, uh, family owns the property just adjacent to the south, they're trying to get things clear, cleared up in case they want to sell. Right here, so you can see the, the old lines, there's one, and there's one. And they're just adjusting it a little bit.
Is that just to match like a current fence line or something, or?
Yeah. Yep, there's trees and fence here and here, and like I said, they wanna get this, uh, straightened out because they're likely gonna try to sell this piece. So we don't wanna have that issue we had a couple months ago.
Do they own the property to the north?
Um, no, I believe, yeah, that's the lion's family, so his wife, her family owns both of these pieces.
All right. 'Cause it's adding to the north anyway, so...
Yeah.
Moving down.
And everything's still conforming, so...
Yep.
Just cleaning up the line. Unless there's any other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Loest.
Second, Kettering.
All right, we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Loest?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hummel?
Yeah.
Welsh?
Yes.
Clark?
Yeah.
All right, we're on to the list plat.
As we just discussed, that seven plus acre parcel, they want to divide into five different lots and sell them for housing.
And since we just approved it for, um...
Yep.
Moderate density, then one acre is the minimum, they're all about just shy of acre and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're, they're...
Go ahead.
How would they access that if they chose to, uh, sell additional lots to the north of those five lots?
Right here, there's an easement.
I can't see it, Bill, where, where?
Right here. Let me zoom, let me zoom in a little bit. Right here.
That's between laws and, and their place?
Yeah, between this parcel and this first lot, there's an easement on their side of the fence line to access back here.
Okay.
Thirty-three foot is what it says. So...
Yep.
Good.
It's thirty-three on the west, thirty-three on the south.
Correct, yeah, for the current road, West Eleventh would be on the south side.
Right.
So eventually, if they develop that, is it the quarter line?
Yeah.
Then the law would give thirty-three feet for a private road.
This, this parcel also goes all the way to three fourteen, so they may be able to get an access from the state there also, so...
I believe there's one access there.
Yeah, but if, but if they keep building on, I would guess at some point, they would wanna divide it and have some come from the top and some from the bottom.
Development, yep. Yep.
And just so you're aware, so if you approve this tonight, this will go along with the, to the county commission meeting, won't be approved until the second reading, and then I hold it in the office until the rezone takes effect, then they can take it over and have it recorded. So it can be recorded until the rezone is official.
The cart before the horse.
Right.
Yep.
And they're aware of all that, they know they're gonna have to wait.
The, uh, to the west, the half a mile, that, uh, what is it, thirty lots that we...
Uh, I think it's twenty lots, it's...
Twenty lots?
It's the old Schwartz property that, uh...
Yeah.
Dratman is developing.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty.
Yep, I think there's twenty, well, he's, we did a preliminary plat on this one. There might be thirty, I can't remember exactly, but he's got...
There's three cul-de-sacs.
Cul-de-sac, yep, so that would make, uh, thirty, and then he's got the option for this piece too, once this one's completed. And he had talked about the desire to have this paved, going north and south, but whether that'll happen, I don't know, but he's gonna try. But whether that'll happen, I don't know, but he's going to try.
Yeah, they're out there working pretty hard right now.
Yep.
Moving dirt.
Weather's been perfect. I'd move approval of the list plat, Loest.
Second.
Too slow to hand.
All right, we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Loest?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hummel?
Yeah.
Welsh?
Yes.
Clark?
Yeah.
All right, we're on to the Dumont Holdings plat. Seems like this one's in here every month.
Yeah, they should have just done the whole thing at one time, but, you know, nobody ever does that. Let's see if I can find it. Why am I not seeing it? Yeah, let's search up the... Where's that? Oh, did I?
Uh, the last three is oh-one-oh instead of, it's one-three dot zero-one-three dot four-hundred.
Yeah, I that fingered that.
There you go.
So this actually, we did, you're right, we did the preliminary plat a couple months ago. And every month since then, we've had, um, final plats. And so this plat finishes off that preliminary plat. So... So we are... Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, so nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. So these six lots.
And that's all of them?
And that, those are the last ones available. They'll have to create a new preliminary plat on the next section, or next part.
Did they ever get the road situation all squared away?
Last I heard, it was going to go to court, you're talking about the, the adverse possession?
Yeah, down at that corner.
Still being thought about.
Gotcha.
So...
Well, nothing's changed, I don't think, since the preliminary, so...
Move approval of the plat, Loest.
Second, Welsh.
All right, we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Loest?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hummel?
Yeah.
Welsh?
Yes.
Clark?
All right, that brings us to the final agenda items, public comment. Seeing none, a closed public comment. Anybody else have anything to add while we're still in session, or you can do a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second, Loest.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
You guys on the phone have fun. It was seventy-five degrees, no wind, sun out all day today here. Too bad. It's going to rain and snow this weekend when you come back.
That's just a bad attitude. I put my snow blower away, so it can't snow.
Right.
Our lot needs to be mowed, so I got to get the mower out.